All right. So, evening. It is Monday, June 4th, 2018. At 6:00 PM at the Neil Shapiro Center Performing Arts at Winthrop High School. Ms. Ames, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Fabiano.
Yeah.
Mr. Matucci.
Yep.
Ms. Powell.
Present.
Ms. Swope.
Present.
Mr. Vecchia.
Present.
Mr. Perrin.
Here.
Mr. Capobianco.
Here.
Mr. Matucci, would you please lead us in our pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to quickly take the meeting out of order so we have our delegates and visitors go ahead of public comment just because we have some students here with us.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I would like to ask Ms. Brittany Daly to come up. Tonight, we would like to honor our middle school drama best winners, gold medal winners, by giving you guys all these certificates. Awesome, awesome job with Shutter Sun. So, we have certificates for you. We have some late runners come on in and sit down.
Probably got a couple of strangles.
A few strangles, and I know a few students had other activities and they couldn't come. So, there's 54 of you.
Yes.
Which speaks very highly to the number of kids that are involved in drama, involved in the drama society. And you guys should be super proud of yourselves. So, each one of these, it's a resolution, and it is signed by all of the school committee. You're super important to keep. How to have your parents get a spare room, staff to put all of your awards in, so you can keep them. But they are super important to keep. How many people were in the sixth grade and did your book about your life with Curb and Causin? Did you guys do like a whole? Do they still do that, Curb and Causin? Remember what the kids did?
They do.
Say it again?
They stopped.
Oh, they stopped, didn't they?
It's a lot of work.
Oh, all right. So, stop doing it. So, get, because I think you guys are looking smart, and I know you're going to have a lot of poppers for us. Get a binder, and get little plastic things to stick them in, and start to collect things like this, so that when you're ready to go off to college, you can go back and look at what day you received different awards while you've been doing this. To save yourself, to make yourself a more smart portfolio. So, I'm going to read one of these, and then you will read each one. We'll have you guys come up, and you can shake our hands, look over for a picture. Camera's over there. Show them all of them, how awesome you guys are, and then we'll go back to the seat. So, the resolution says, whereas, now it'll be your name in each one of these, has served with enthusiasm and school spirit, working as a member of the Winthrop Middle School Drama Society, whereas, we're going to come on again, and fellow classmates had a role in the production and performance of Shutter Sun, and earned a state championship of gold medal at the Massachusetts Educational Theatre Guild Competition, and therefore be it resolved that the school committee. These folks here. Of the town of Winthrop, extended sincerest gratitude and offer our best wishes for you in all future endeavors. And may this be voted as part of the official minutes of the school committee. So, you guys are officially in the school committee minutes as gold medal winners. Okay? Come on in, guys. Take a seat. So, we will read you one at a time, and if you want, we can do, come up here, and we'll hand you this, and then you can walk down that side, and go back to your seat, and eventually we'll take a little break once we've read everybody, so that you guys can take a full picture, and then go home and be home.
Or packed for DC.
Or packed for DC, one of the two. So, Ms. Daly will start reading these, and you guys will come up one at a time. All right, Jolena. Back to her.
She should get up and...
There you go. Next one. The title is...
Tino, get up there.
Mela Promenza. Mela's not going to do it. Good job, Mia. Did you have a good job? Nice job, nice job. Sage Kalinda. Maha Fazi. Chelsea Thompson. JD Parker. He must already be packed for DC.
He's ready to go.
Your mother's probably picked you up. Yeah. All right. Good job.
Thank you.
Luke Owen. Julie Cabrera. Well, Gillis. Melina Recola. Jenny Hickey. Janessa Watkins. Yep, Will McMullen. Tyler Vendetti. Adjevallis. John Tracy. Maddie Tolliver. Jessica Sores. Rachel Romano. Chris Rainey. Corey Cowell. Maddie Colino. Hannah Parker. Bruno Oliveira. Zoe Long. Shahid Kazan. Connor Johnson. Caroline Hickey. Aiden Hanafin. Maya Bryan. She's still upstairs. Emma Forsythe, she's not here. Kayla Corula. Declan Donovan. Sarah Delahanty. Jenny Delahanty. Jada Curly, she has the pack. All right, well, it's a packing. She wants to get ready for DC. Ivy Crespo. Francesca Connor. Asha Conceito. Libby Carney. Michael Callanan. Christian Bonaparte. Evan Bernstein. Kaylin Berry, not here. Manuela Mejia, she's not here, right? Nope. Tatiana Lewis is packing. Yes. Julia Dickinson, nope, she's not here. Jack Flaherty. And Haley McCormick. Aiden Hanafin is now here. And we still, we are missing Mr. Bernstein. This is what's fine. I know, you're here, we're going to find you a little gift.
We skipped yours here.
So, you look through that pile, and I'm going to go over here. I got it, right here.
You got it?
Yep. Evan Bernstein! And we would be remiss if we did not give one to Ms. Brittany Daly.
Thanks.
For all of you, I think what we would like to do is maybe take a minute and have you guys maybe come and sit on the stage, so we can take a picture, if you don't mind. So, you guys know...
All right, and we're back. Moving on with our meeting, it's time for a public comment. Let's keep public comment to two minutes per person. Do we have any public comment?
I don't think they hear you, Tino.
Do we have any public comment? If you could move down here, just so we could hear you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Carolyn Gieden, and it's that time of year again. I've been asked to come here representing a group of citizens who are still against school choice, and I will be very brief, but there's a number of reasons why a lot of community members are against it, but in a nutshell, one is the reimbursement. Many, many people feel it's unfair to absorb the responsibility to educate students from outside our district for $5,000 when we taxpayers are contributing $13,000 to educate each student per year. So, our per pupil expenditure is probably in excess of $13,000 now, and school choice is still capped at $5,000. And the other issue is, you know, there's lots of talk of diversity, but there is really this feeling, and I have talked to a lot of educators, that our population is quite diverse, and that our school system does have quite a lot of need, and that the needs in terms of guidance and the adjustment councils, the needs are skyrocketing, and that despite our best efforts, we still have a lot on our plate to deal with, and that to absorb the responsibility of students from outside our district is unfair. It puts an, places an unfair burden on our system at this point in time. I know that money is an issue, but the citizens that I represent don't feel like school choice is the answer to our budget issues. So, in a nutshell, I'll cap it off. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment?
Just have to stay there, do you?
Mr. Seotis, just for the minutes, can you say your name?
Nick Seotis, lifelong resident. I'm here with the same group concerned citizens. As you know, the last couple of years, we've come down to the meeting that we've had between 30 and 40 parents. The first time was at the library at the old high school, where there were so many parents that were against school choice. Mr. Lucero had actually to keep people outside, they couldn't come in. So, we're going to be the representatives tonight. We feel that we have, as a community, going forward and voted for a new high school, we voted for a new field. Water rates just went up 17 percent. We also feel that our students are thriving at Winthrop Public Schools, and a lot of the scholarships that have been left, we've left five Winthrop residents, four Winthrop residents. We also feel that the high school classes, there's been issues as far as capacity goes as well, and we feel very strongly that if there was another community around us, every Chelsea we did, I've been a longtime Boston Public School teacher, that had school choice, we could be comfortable with this. But since no other community around us, including Lynn, every, if you can go right up to the North Shore, doesn't reciprocate, and if it was a good program, they would go for it, I think it would be fair, we wouldn't feel so strongly about this. But the fact that no other community around us has this program, it seems problematic to us. It also doesn't seem like it makes financial sense to us when we're losing money on this. So, I hope the committee shows their wisdom, as they have the last couple of years, and really backs the constituents in this town, because in the last two years, every single proponent of school choice spoke, and there was nobody in favor. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Nick.
Any further public comment? Yes, sir.
Hey, old man. I'm Kevin Harris. You'll probably see me around a little bit. Barely involved, actually, this is my first time speaking at any town council, school committee meeting, so excuse me if I'm not completely on point, but I went to Winthrop High School from 2003 to 2007, and in my time, we had school choice. I found it to be beneficial. I thought I brought in a lot of great people in my life who were outside of the town we live, you know, in Suffolk County, which, you know, you go five miles in any direction, it's very diverse here, which I've always found in my experience, as I've expanded my life, that it's been beneficial for me to meet more people from my range of community instead of just driving through it, honestly. And a lot of people who came through school choice actually have a lot of good friends today. Unfortunately, to admit it, Tino's one of those friends. Try to avoid it as much as possible. Very few times, I'll ever, I don't think I've ever said this, I agree with Tino. It's a very rare statement. Never say this. I agree with Tino that we should have school choice. I think the numbers add up to where we bring in more revenue. I know at this point, for budget-wise, things are tough in the town, but we're also at the best economic point that we're probably going to reach in Winthrop for a while. If this happens to be a net positive, I think if it's something that we can bank, at some point, the tough times are going to come, and we don't have industry or anything else in Winthrop to combat that when the tough time comes. Because I came in 2003, when the whole bottom fell out, when Mitt Romney cut state and local aid, and we had to eliminate the whole sports market. And that was tough, we had a lot of people leave, but we had a lot of people come in who gave Winthrop a chance that never would have before, and I met a lot of good friends. I'm not going to just throw their names out there because I'm going to ask, but, you know, Steve Perez was one of our friends who did school choice, and he ended up being an active, you know, served toward Iraq, if you understand. You know, he passed away unfortunately. But we brought in a lot of great people, and like, I made a lot of friends that brought up new experiences to me. Not that, you know, Winthrop's not diverse, it could do better, and it's not the overall archetypal theme of it, but even though, say we break even, we don't make a positive off it. There's other factors that come into just having more connections with the community around us, because long-term, it'd be good to have, if we're making, getting people ready for life, you know, people want to be ready, I want to get out of high school to do taxes, also start working.
Forget about two minutes.
Most people leave town. I work in a job that's very diverse. I was ready, you know? Wasn't completely ready, but it's a life skill to be ready to work with the people that are in your community, whether it be Chelsea Revere, Boston, and Boston hasn't, Roxy, Roxbury, Mattapan. That's just my opinion. Thanks for everything you guys do, really appreciate everything. You guys take more arrows and don't get that many hugs.
Thank you.
Any further public comment? All right, moving on with our meeting. First, we forgot to make a motion to accept the citations early, so I'd like to make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Swope, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on, we have the minutes for the May 21st meeting. I'd like to make a motion to accept those minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Perrin.
We don't have minutes.
Hold on, we have minutes. Okay. Never mind, we don't have the minutes. All right. Moving on, we have financial, business, and procedures. We do have some warrants.
Did he vote?
This evening.
They're not ready yet.
We have warrant SVW 18-21 in the amount of $141,460.30. Payroll warrant SPW 18-22 in the amount of $654,127.95. And payroll warrant SPW 18-13, the amount of $700,013, $700,016.45. I'd like to make a motion to approve the warrants and payroll warrants. Seconded by Mr. Fabiano. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. We have no buildings and grounds this evening. Any subcommittee reports? Superintendent's report.
Thank you. Just a few highlights. Many of you were in attendance at these activities, but this has been a big week, big week for Winthrop Public Schools. Our prom was at Granite Links. I was invited to go to the prom and was able to come to the promenade here at the high school, which was a great way for our students to start their evening off. Everybody comes into the gym together, parents dropped students off, some of our students brought their own cars, they parked here, went into the gym, and they gathered as a class, all 109 students, and then some outside students that were dates, or some underclassmen that came as dates for the prom. I've had the opportunity to walk around the gym and check out people's outfits, beautiful prom dresses. Kids came dressed so individually, some with lots of sparkle, some very plain suits, dresses. The interesting part inside the gym was the way that the students were interacting with each other, and how it was such a happy, happy time, but also people were crying, you know, kids were excited, but they were sad. So, showing all those emotions of what happens when you get to this sort of week of culminating activities, where we're winding down just to gear up and then begin life in another direction as you leave high school. Onto the prom, the kids showed up at Granite Links, they came in the buses, which is just such a great idea. First time sitting in this role as a superintendent, having to actually worry about more than one, because last year, I only had to worry about one, which was my own. So, seeing the buses pull up and watching the kids safely come off the buses, they had probably a good hour in traffic to get from Winthrop to Quincy, so they spent some more time talking on the buses, chatting it up, and then coming in to the hall, and there was a piano in the hallway, one of those self-playing pianos, where you could turn it on. At one point, Mr. Crombie was pretending that he was actually playing, and he wasn't, and then they shut the self-player off, and David Tracy sat down, and he played. Actually, Frankie Fabiano was playing as well. I'm going to guess he was self-playing, but I'm not 100% sure, I'll hold you that. But then David sat down, and he started playing, and the kids sort of surrounded him as they came in, and it was just such a smooth transition into this hall that was breathtaking. Inside the hall, as you walked into the hall, there was a door that led to a balcony that went almost, almost all the way around the actual facility. And the kids were out there taking pictures of themselves, of course, doing selfies and everything else that you do. It was so laid back, but the best part of the night was when I spoke later on in the evening to Mr. Crombie, who said that the DJ had come up to him and made comments about how classy our kids were, and how nice it was to be at a prom, where kids actually came up and didn't shout something at them, but said, "Hey, gee, thanks, you just played that, do you mind playing this?" And then at the end of the night, while the kids were leaving, he was taken back by the number of kids that walked up to him and shook his hand, and said, "Thanks for taking care of us tonight, you were awesome." And that just speaks to the class that our kids have, so I wanted to toss that out, about how great the prom was. And graduation, you know, for me, it was the first time, obviously, to be leading a whole group of people, whole group of students through graduation, sort of a wake-up call for me, as I stood upstairs with all of the teachers and dignitaries that were lining up to come down and walk into the gym. And we walked in first, accompanied by, or led by, a bagpipe player, and that, that really made the difference, I think, at the prom. You could hear the bagpipes from what folks who were in the gym were telling me, you could hear the bagpipes softly, and then they just got louder and louder and louder. And then, of course, we came in as, as the staff of the school, along with all the dignitaries, walked up to the front and then turned around to welcome the 109 students who had come in to take their seat and then be led with the Pledge of Allegiance by, by one of our students. So, we had a tremendous amount of scholarships given out. The speeches of the students were spot-on, classy. Once again, I keep coming back to that term, but that's what comes to mind when I think about this particular class. And then it was over, like that, you know, quickly. An hour in, I think we were in there for about an hour and 45 minutes when the students threw their hats up in the air. Then they didn't want to leave, so they were all mulling around out in the cafeteria, and no one was really eating, eating the cookies or drinking the drinks that were out there, the coffee and juice that they had for the kids. And they sort of mulled around, and then slowly, the number of kids got smaller and smaller. So, it was just a great night. I don't think there was anything more important that happened in my life as a superintendent in the past week that I would bring to a superintendent report than the culmination of, of the seniors. So, it was a great night. I know that some folks were able to see it. I believe we did the videotape of it, so we will put that out to WCAT so that they can air it, so that other folks can see what an amazing night it was for our kids. And that is all I have as a superintendent tonight.
Personnel?
All right. Guys are moving fast for me tonight.
Yeah.
So, I'm going to start with resignations. So, I would like to read the resignation of Principal Ryan Herity. So, many of you know that Ryan is moving on to be the principal of a school in Vermont. He has made some decisions with his family that are taking him to another state, and I would just like to read his, his letter. I am writing to inform you that on July 1st, 2018, I will be resigning from my position as principal of the Arthur T. Cummings School to pursue an opportunity in Vermont. My last day of employment will be June 30th, 2018. This opportunity is a chance to spend more time with my three young children and follow a dream that my wife and I have discussed for several years. It is exciting for our family, but also very emotional based on the wonderful experiences I have had in Winthrop. I am truly sad to leave the Cummings School and the amazing people that have made my time in this district so special. I thank you for the learning opportunities you have provided me with this year, as you have taken over as superintendent. I am very optimistic about the future of Winthrop due to the incredible students, families, educators, and administrators that make this town such a wonderful place. I appreciate the great support from the town of Winthrop and from you as a superintendent, and will always be available if needed to ensure the transition, that the transition goes smoothly and students are not impacted by this change in leadership. So, it is with sadness that I say Ryan is, is leaving us. However, his reason for leaving is family-based, and I think that's important to note. He and I have had several discussions over the past months about his transitioning to another place. Vermont was really where he wanted to go. He's been an asset to this community. His vision and his focus on individual student instruction is, is amazing. His, his attention to detail with the testing that we have and the curriculum, and making sure we're aware of the standards, and that his teachers are supported in their understanding of the standards, and that they're supported within their classroom by bringing other teachers into the classroom to help support each other, has been wonderful. And I will be working with, with the staff on the next step in, in his replacement, and hopefully be able to announce that as early as tomorrow. The next resignation we have is Stephanie Patel. Please accept this letter as notice of my resignation as a seventh-grade science teacher at the Winthrop Little, Middle School. My last day of employment will be in June. I received an offer to teach in a, in a larger district, and after careful consideration, I feel as though this is a good opportunity for me to continue to grow as an educator. I really enjoyed working with Winthrop Middle School under your leadership, and I hope these, our paths will cross again soon. And that letter was written to Mr. Curly from Stephanie Patel.
The, the interesting part inside the gym was the way that the students were interacting with each other and how it was such a happy, happy time, but also people were crying. You know, kids were excited, but they were sad. So, showing all those emotions, um, of what happens when you get to this sort of week of culminating activities where we're winding down just to gear up and then begin life in another direction as you leave high school. Onto the prom, the kids showed up at Granite Links. They came in the buses, which is just such a great idea. First time sitting in this role as a superintendent, having to actually worry about more than one because last year I only had to worry about one, which was my own. Uh, so seeing the buses pull up and watching the kids safely come off the buses, they had probably a good hour in traffic, uh, to get from Winthrop to Quincy. Uh, so they spent some more time talking on the buses, chatting it up, and then coming in, um, to the hall. And there was a piano in the hallway, one of those, um, self-playing pianos where you could turn it on. At one point, Mr. Crombie was pretending that he was actually playing and he wasn't. And then they shut the self-player off and David Tracy sat down and he played. Actually Frankie Fabiano was, was playing as well. I'm gonna guess he was self-playing, but I'm not a hundred percent sure, I'll hold you that. But then David sat down and he started playing. Um, and the kids sort of surrounded him as they came in and it was just such a smooth transition into this hall that was breathtaking. Inside the hall, as you walked into the hall, there was a, a door that led to a balcony that went almost, almost all the way around the actual facility. And the kids were out there taking pictures of themselves, of course, doing selfies and everything else, uh, that you do. It was so laid back. But the best part of the night was, um, when I spoke later on in the evening to Mr. Crombie, who said that the DJ had come up to him and, and made comments about how classy our kids were and how nice it was to be at a prom where kids actually came up and didn't shout something at them, but said, "Hey gee, thanks. You just played that, do you mind playing this?" And then at the end of the night, while the kids were leaving, he was taken back by the number of kids that walked up to him and shook his hand and said, "Thanks for taking care of us tonight, you were awesome." Um, and that just speaks to the class that our kids have, so I wanted to toss that out, uh, about how great the prom was. And graduation, you know, uh, for me, it was, uh, first time, obviously, to be leading a whole group of people, whole group of students through graduation. Sort of a wake-up call for me as I stood upstairs with all of the teachers and dignitaries that were lining up to come down and walk into the gym. And we walked in first accompanied by, or led by a bagpipe player. And that, that really made the difference, I think, at the prom. Um, you could hear the bagpipes from what folks who were in the gym were telling me, you could hear the bagpipes softly and then they just got louder and louder and louder. And then, of course, um, we came in as, as the staff of the school, along with all the dignitaries, walked up to the front and then turned around to welcome the hundred and nine students who had come in, uh, to, to take their seat and then be led, uh, with the pledge of allegiance by, uh, by one of our students. So, uh, we had a tremendous amount of scholarships given out. The speeches of the students were spot-on, um, classy. Once again, I keep coming back to that term, but that's what I, comes to mind when I think about this particular class. And then it was over like that, you know, quickly. An hour in, I think we were in there for about an hour and forty-five minutes when the students threw their hats up in the air. Then they didn't want to leave, so they were all mulling around out in the cafeteria. No one was really eating, eating the cookies or the, drinking the drinks that were out there, the coffee and, and, uh, juice that they had for the kids. And they sort of mulled around and, and then slowly the number of kids got smaller and smaller. So it was just a great night. I don't think there was anything more important that happened in my life as a superintendent in the past week that I would bring to a superintendent report than the culmination of, of the seniors. So it was a great night. I know that some folks were able to see it. I believe we did the videotape of it, so we, we will put that, uh, out to WCAT so that they can air it, so that other folks can see, uh, what an amazing night it was for our kids. And that is all I have as a superintendent tonight.
Personnel?
All right. Guys are moving fast for me tonight.
Yeah.
So, um, I'm gonna start with resignations. So I would like to read the resignation of, um, Principal Ryan Herity. So many of you know that Ryan is moving on, uh, to be the principal of a school in Vermont. He has made some decisions with his family that are taking him to another state. And I would just like to read his, his letter. I am writing to inform you that on July first, two thousand and eighteen, I will be resigning from my position as principal of the Arthur T. Cummings School to pursue an opportunity in Vermont. My last day of employment will be June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. This opportunity is a chance to spend more time with my three young children and follow a dream that my wife and I have discussed for several years. It is, it is exciting for our family, but also very emotional based on the wonderful experiences I have had in Winthrop. I am truly sad to leave the Cummings School and the amazing people that have made my time in this district so special. I thank you for the learning opportunities you have provided me with this year as you have taken over as superintendent. I am very optimistic about the future of Winthrop due to the incredible students, families, educators, and administrators that make this town such a wonderful place. I appreciate the great support from the town of Winthrop and from you as a superintendent and will always be available if needed to ensure the transition, that the transition goes smoothly and students are not impacted by this change in leadership. So it is with sadness that I say Ryan is, is leaving us. However, uh, hi- his reason for leaving is family-based, and I think that's important to note. He and I have had several discussions over the past months, uh, about his transitioning, uh, to another place. Vermont was really where he wanted to go. He's been a, an asset to this community. His vision and his focus on individual student instruction, um, is, is amazing. His, his attention to detail with the testing that we have and the curriculum and making sure we're aware of the standards and that his teachers are supported in their understanding of the standards and that they're supported within their classroom, uh, by bringing other teachers into the classroom to help support each other has been, um, wonderful. And I will be working with, um, with the staff on the next step in, in, uh, his replacement and hopefully be able to announce that as early as tomorrow. The next, um, resignation we have is Stephanie Patel. Please accept this letter as notice of my resignation as a seventh grade science teacher at the Winthrop Little, uh, Middle School. My last day of employment will be in June. I received an offer to teach in a, in a larger district and af- after careful consideration, I feel as though this is a good opportunity for me to continue to grow as an educator. I really enjoyed working with Winthrop Middle School under your leadership and I hope these, our paths will cross again soon. And that letter was written to Mr. Curly from Stephanie Patel. And for resignations, uh, that is all we have. For postings, retirements, at this point, we have no new retirements. And for postings, um, we have Special Education Reading Specialist, ESP, which is the Educational Support Personnel. We've had resignation at the last meeting, so we posted that. Special Education Teacher for, uh, the anticipated opening for a Special Education Teacher for the therapeutic classroom. A Winthrop, at the Winthrop Middle School, Report Card Revision Stipend, which is a stipend, an internal posting stipend for, uh, looking at the revision of the elementary report cards. Grade seven science teacher, and that was a resignation from, uh, tonight. Winthrop Middle School Elementary Music Teacher, kindergarten teacher, uh, William P. Gorman Kindergarten Teacher, obviously, uh, also an AP Environmental Science and elective teacher at Winthrop High School. And in terms of leave of absence, uh, we have one maternity leave that is in your packet. And that would be it for personnel, I believe.
All right. So...
One question, can I just say? Lisa Ann, wasn't the curriculum director in there as well?
Did I miss that? Did I not say that?
Yeah, I don't think so.
So, yes, that, that's in your packet. So, an anticipated opening for an Executive Director of Curriculum Instruction and Accountability. And, um, the job description is in there for that particular position.
Would this individual also be, um, able to do grant writing as well?
That, that would be one of the major focuses is...
Is that in the job description? I went real quickly, I didn't see it.
I believe so. And, um, it would be overs- oversight of, um, professional development activities and especially those that come under the grant. So in typically, an Executive Director of, of Curriculum Instruction and Accountability deals with Title I, Title II, Title II-A, Title III, as well as seeking grant opportunities for curriculum. And oftentimes, ELL, the grants that are involved in ELL, uh, as well. So we are looking for somebody who is an experienced grant writer and also somebody who has a handle on, um, the Department of Education and what the Department of Education has out there. Oftentimes, if, if you're not familiar with the department and all the activities that they have available for you, you, you have to really work hard with that website in order to find information. Um, some folks who have been involved, uh, as curriculum directors for quite some time are familiar with that particular website, but also, um, they have subgroups where curriculum directors meet monthly at the state level and, uh, which is a great place for them to talk about what, what types of grants are out there. Does that fit our community? Um, so we would be looking for somebody who has a wealth of experience in writing for those grants. As, as you know, oftentimes, it's how you write it, uh, how you write the grant and how you portray your community. Or someone also, if you're a decent grant writer, um, you also know the ins and outs of, of collaborating with other districts. Many of these grants will allow you to collaborate with another district, same-sized district, somebody a little bit smaller, to share grant money. Um, and that's definitely allowable in many of the grants. Seeking those grants out can be, can be hard, um, if you, if you don't know where to look. So we'd be looking for somebody who could do that as well.
All right, new business, um...
Lisa, I think you men- excuse me, I have a call. Think you mentioned that you would be presenting your strategic plan or don't you? Uh, relatively soon at...
Correct.
To the committee, so when do you think we could expect that?
For the strategic plan? The fall, I would say September. A fair amount of the work that the leadership team will do over the summer is they're at the point now where they completed, um, SWACs and Theory of Action. And so they're at the point now where they can identify the themes along with me and now begin to target that plan around those themes. Key will be the Director of Curriculum Instruction and Accountability in, in driving, uh, some of those three themes, especially around the planning for professional development district-wide. That would be, the anticipation is it would be district-wide cre- professional development that ties K to twelve. Um, so reasonably, September, um, that will be ready to be brought to the school committee for approval. And then the plan beyond that, as you know, it gets deeper and deeper, um, you know, in terms of the detail and the indicators of that plan.
Okay, thank you.
So, new business, we have to take a vote. By law, every year, each school committee has to take a vote on school choice. Again, that is by law. So do we have a motion on the table regarding school choice?
I'll make a motion to vote, is that what you want to do?
Yeah.
I'll make a vote.
And what would you like that motion to be?
That we say no to school choice.
There's a motion on the table by Mr. Fabiano, second by Mr. Matucci. So, uh, do we have any discussion?
Yes.
We'll just go along the table.
I, um, this is my third year voting on school choice. And it's something that I do my homework on. And I understand what school choice is for and I, I, I completely understand it. An opportunity to, for children or students to go to different districts if that's what they decide to do. My only problem with it is that it's a choice for other communities to come to Winthrop, but our kids don't have a choice to go elsewhere. These are some of the communities around Winthrop that do not have school choice. Boston, Brookline, Cambridge, Chelsea, Everett, Lynn, Malden, Marblehead, Nahat, Revere, Saugus, Somerville, and Swambscott. So I just think it's, it's a great program. Uh, it gives youth an opportunity to go places. It's a choice, it's a school choice program, but our kids don't have a choice to go elsewhere or anywhere that would be, you know, easy to get to unless they want to go out to Springfield.
If I may, Mr. Vecchetti, just point of information, a lot of those communities you just named have MECO. Does that mean you'd be in favor of MECO?
Say that again?
A lot of those communities you just named, they do not have school choice, they have MECO, which is a more progressive form of school choice. Does that mean you'd be in favor of that?
The discussion tonight is on school choice.
No, but that's why they don't have school choice, because they'd have MECO. I just want to make that clear to you.
Could we have that available to us?
We could if we wanted to. So I'm just, I'm just making sure you're aware of that as a fact.
You know, it was brought up, uh, in two thousand and three, two thousand and four, we had a lot of school choice, uh, students here in Winthrop. And I think the school department at the time accepted it with open arms because of our financial status. Um, you know, we have a situation now where we have new buildings in Winthrop and we're gonna have a space problem because now kids want to stay in Winthrop, they don't want to leave the system. So we have to make sure that we have enough space in, within our, you know, buildings to accommodate the citizens of Winthrop and, and the residents' kids.
Mr. Capri, if I may. Just a, a little bit of background on school choice that I think is important for community members to know as well. So back, uh, probably two thousand and three, when I was here as a Director of Pupil Personnel Services, I was the school choice, uh, liaison for the school district. So just a few little background things that I think folks should know, so you're educated on what it is and what it's not. And I will, um, certainly start off by saying, at this point in time in Winthrop and with my review of, and detailed review of the student, our student numbers, um, our budget, our, um, schools as they exist right now, our student population, I am not in favor at this moment in time of school choice for Winthrop for today. It is a vote that has to be taken yearly by June first. If the school committee does not act on it by June first, it is assumed that you are a school choice community and that is why the vote is out today, so that we can make sure that we take that vote and that we're not automatically, um, uh, put in a situation where we, the Department of Education says we take it. The second piece of it is, students in Winthrop have the right to go to any community and it, it's very difficult to, to get that information by looking again at that Department of Education website, which is very difficult to navigate. If you are a student in Winthrop, even if Winthrop does not offer school choice, you have the right to go to any community in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that does. So if, if we say no to school choice and we have a student who wants to go to Beverly High School and Beverly offers school choice, and they do, it, I don't know if they voted it out yet this year, but as of right now, they do, our students in Winthrop could attend Beverly's, um, high school if they were accepted by school choice. Uh, in, as of, uh, two thousand and fifteen and sixteen, we had sixteen school choice students. Two thousand and sixteen, seventeen, we had twelve. Seventeen, eighteen, we had three. And eighteen, nineteen, there will be none if the school department votes zero because our, our students will have graduated. Once you accept a school choice student, you can accept school choice at any level. So the school committee has the, has the opportunity and the right to say, "We would like to accept school choice in grade twelve" or "We'd like to accept it in nine through twelve" or "Grade seven and eleven." That's the, that's the, uh, school committee has that right to say that. In the past, we have done nine through twelve. At one point, I believe around two thousand and twelve, we added in the middle school. Once you accept a student for school choice, that student has the right to attend the school until they graduate. And so you, even if you end school choice two years after you accept it, if you accepted a seventh grader who's now in ninth grade, that child is entitled to stay in the school until they graduate. So there, there are some pretty strict rules around school choice. School choice is not, um, on the school's side. When you vote to accept school choice, you don't have the right to discriminate. You don't have the right to go through applications and say you don't want this particular child or that particular child because of their, uh, school grades or their path, their transcript or their athletic ability or, um, the only, the only right you have is to take a look at a school discipline and determine if there is a felony on a student's record. That there is some conversation that can happen when there is a felony for a student. Other than that, if there are ten spots in the eleventh grade and you have ten applicants and there are no felonies or charges on those, on those ten applicants, you have to accept those ten applicants. If there are twelve applicants for ten seats, you have to do a lottery. And it's not, "I like these first ten kids," it's, it's the lottery. So you have the, this flexibility in the acceptance, um, but there's not a lot of flexibility once you do so. Most districts, uh, when they're approving school choice, they can, um, they approve it based on seat availability and what they have for seats. I'm happy to report that Winthrop Public Schools is losing less kids to private schools than we have in the past. I don't think it's rocket science to figure out why. We have amazing teachers, our scores are going up and our schools are beautiful and our facilities are beautiful. So our students are staying. Going into the ninth grade, this year we graduated a hundred and nine students from the senior class. That senior class is the same senior class that when they were supposed to come to ninth grade was stuffed back in to the middle school. They couldn't leave, they had to stay there because our school wasn't ready. That same senior class stayed there again and didn't come to this building until they were, until they were juniors. So they, so that we lost some students during that time and it's understandable. We had some students who didn't want to stay in the middle school for, I don't know, eleven years. They were, they were stuck in one building. So, um, next year's senior class, the current eleventh grade class, next year's senior class will jump up to a hundred and sixty. It's a lot of students. The tenth, the, next year's eleventh grade class, we will have a hundred and fifty-one and I anticipate more students returning perhaps from the vocational school. Every year we have kids return from the vocational school and for some reason, eleventh grade seems to be that bump year that we do receive more students back. Tenth grade, I hope you're sitting, a hundred and eighty-four students in the tenth grade next year. It's a lot of students. The ninth grades, in the eighth grade right now, we have a hundred and fifty-seven students. I would assume that will go up a little bit. Uh, we may lose a few students, but we, we always gain students as well. We're having a lot of families moving into the community. I've had some, uh, the opportunity to spend some time with Caldwell Banker, the new real estate firm in town. Um, they're reporting certainly an increase in the value and the cost of homes in Winthrop, but homes are turning over very quickly, not lasting on the market and, um, the sense is that lots of families are moving into our community. So I see this trend in increasing, um, student enrollment, which is great. And, and we're very pumped up about that. School choice students bring in five thousand dollars per student. Back in the day when we had lower student enrollment and we were accepting students, it was, class, class size was seventeen, sixteen in some cases in certain grades, and we would pinpoint those grades and say we can take ten or fifteen students in that grade. Reason behind it was the class was gonna run anyway. The class had fifteen students in it, that class was still gonna run. If you added three or five more students, you multiplied five thousand dollars per student. So you were not losing money because the class was still gonna happen. We were not handing out lots of materials and supplies to students. So when you talk about how much does it cost per pupil, that's a, that's a, a general statement and it's not an exact science for each student. So anyway, that is why we, uh, did school choice back at that time. We began to rely on that income and I was part of that. And I'm sure Susan can remember, that income was something that we relied on to fund up our, our teachers and it paid for some of our, our teachers' salaries. If you're a student with special needs, you automatically have five, the five thousand comes with that student. The school district fills out some intricate paperwork and I'm aware of that because I was the one that did it. For every child that receives special education services in the district, the school district receives beyond that five thousand, it's a very specific calculated formula that you have to put in place to make sure that you're capturing all the costs of the teaching services that you give to students, speech and language, OT. Our Life Skills Classroom run by Mr. Chris Donnelly at one point had three students that were school choice students. Amazing contribution to this community and school district and to all of our kids. They gave back way more than we gave to them. They also gave us back approximately forty-five thousand dollars apiece into our budget because the increment data that we had to report for each one of those students was five thousand dollars plus a one-to-one aide, plus all the special ed services in a Life Skills class. At that moment in time, that was a win-win for the Winthrop Public Schools. We were not drawing kids to Winthrop just merely for our facilities. We have grown and, and we are keeping kids here in our district. And, uh, you know, it would not be my recommendation at this moment in time, but I think we have to keep our eye on, you know, the finances of the school. At this point, I don't think that we would be drawing kids into our, uh, programs for special need students because they're relatively full. I think one of the parents spoke about the social, emotional wellbeing of our students and, and we have a lot of work to do with our students here. So I just wanted to give you that background because I think there's some false understanding out there. And again, that, that website is difficult to glean what the, the laws and the rules and the regulations around school choice are. I happen to have lived the, the life of it for about eleven years, so, um, I feel as though I know it well. Um, and I would just give you that information so you can make an informed decision, uh, as you are voting for school choice.
Ms. Matucci?
Just one quick question for the superintendent. Do we still offer, um, I know we have a very limited amount of international students coming in?
We do, we have the I-20 program where students from other countries through an agency called Educacious will, um, petition the school district to accept a student for the upcoming school year. I believe it's fifteen? Fifteen thousand dollars is the tuition?
Twelve, I'm sorry.
Sorry, twelve.
Twelve.
Twelve thousand dollars is the tuition for an international student to come here. The commitment is one year, very different than a school choice commitment, but it just, that's just the way it is. It is two totally different, um, programs. So that student will come here, we, um, also have the right to accept or not accept a student. If we look at a profile and feel as though that wouldn't be a good fit or we don't have, um, the classes that that particular student is interested in taking, we, we don't have to accept the student. Educacious is very clear that they want the fit to be right for the school and the student. Um, it's been a very, very successful, uh, program thus far.
So, um, I guess, keeping with diversity, we, that's, you know, we, we do accept some students from out of the country and in keeping with financial, you know, fiscal responsibility, it's more money.
It's sixteen international students this year.
Yeah.
I, I think we're at about six in terms of the applications and I believe I have two in my email that I need to, um, have a conversation with Mr. Crombie about as well.
Yeah, no, there's a lot of other schools that participate with the Educations Program also. So I think maybe, um, that might be, uh, looks to be the better way to go.
Yeah, they're both options, yeah.
Yeah.
Ms. Hulpe?
Guys, ask you, how many students took advantage of school choice from Winthrop? Do you, do you have a feel for that?
I think we only had two students go out from school choice. And oftentimes, kids will go out from school choice, maybe their parent works in another school that has school choice, so their, their child may go there. And, and along with them goes five thousand dollars. So five thousand dollars that would have come to Winthrop Public Schools now heads to either Beverly or Ipswich, which are two. And just a weird quirky note, there's a hundred and twenty-four school districts in the Commonwealth out of three hundred public school districts that accept school choice at various levels. Some do only kindergarten, some do kindergarten through third. Um, some are listed as accepting school choice, although they have stopped accepting new students, but they still have students in the queue. So last year, if you looked at the department's website and even for, for this current school year, I believe it would show Winthrop as, um, sixteen, seventeen that we still had school choice students and enrolled in our district. And then we still had two left or three left this year that have graduated.
Even though we voted it down a few years ago, the students that were still enrolled were grandfathered.
Yes, yes, I understand, yeah, got it, thank you, okay, thank you.
Mr. Fabiano, would you like to add? Mr. Parent?
Look, Ms. Howard, thank you for all that information. I know, uh, over the last two years especially and especially on Facebook this week, there's been a lot of misinformation out there regarding this issue.
No, I wouldn't know that if it's on Facebook.
I wish this was something we could just take a, a vote on one time. I wish this was something we could just take a, a vote on one time, but unfortunately, after every year, because every year, I feel like I get a lot of flack on it, something I support. In my opinion, we run for office because we believe in helping people, and it's just my opinion that if a kid wants to come here and they want a different opportunity, I see this as a hand up and not a handout, then that's something I'm for. And if you disagree with me, I respect the view, but that's just my opinion. Ms. Powell, anything to add?
Um, yes. I agree with you on the diversity, and I agree with you on the opportunity. I feel, however, with Lisa's recommendation, given the space constraints, given the class sizes that we come up, that we're coming up with, that we're in a difficult position just accommodating our own students. I know the high school's already scrambling to figure out where they're gonna put kids. So I think at this time, it's very difficult to consider. I would like to, I mean, I think the benefit of having a vote every year is that you get to reconsider the issue every year, and maybe next year, we'll be in a different position, and we'll see what's happening with our class sizes.
All right, so there is a motion on the table by Mr. Fabiano to continue to not have school choice. So I believe a yes vote would be to not, to continue to not have school choice. A no vote would be to bring back school choice.
Okay, can you read the motion?
Do you want to read the motion, just to make sure?
I understood the motion. Mr. Fabiano made a motion to say no to school choice. Mr. Matucci seconded the motion.
Okay.
So the, the Department of Education would, likes you to vote whether or not you choose to accept school choice for the upcoming school year. So the vote would be to accept if you could, if you could amend that motion.
So I amended just that to want to take a vote for school choice. To accept school choice. Somebody understand that?
Yes, so you want, so if you were opposed to school, so a vote to oppose school choice would be a no vote?
Say, can you just repeat that, sorry?
Can we repeat what the Department had asked?
So the Department of Education asks you to make a choice whether to accept or not accept school choice. That's how they ask you, so you may want to amend the motion to re-
Just saying not accept school choice.
And it just makes it clear that if you say no, you are not accepting.
A yes vote would be you support.
You accept school choice, a no vote.
A no vote would mean you don't accept. Any further discussion? Ms. Haynes, do please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Fabiano?
No.
Mr. Matucci?
Nope.
Ms. Powell?
No.
Ms. Wolk?
No, not at this time, not this year.
Mr. Vecchia?
No.
Mr. Perrin?
No.
Mr. Capabianco?
And I will report that to the Department of Education tomorrow morning, so.
Any further public comment? There are none, public relations?
Oh, you're looking at me?
Yep.
I just want to congratulate the middle school band for winning the Platinum Award at the Great East Festival. It was kind of exciting to hear the news. We had a police escort in town for them. And when they got back, they were quite excited. And I hope that we can prepare citations like we did for, in the past, and maybe present them at their concert like we did last year. And I just wanted to say thank you to all the folks that did all the planning for the senior class of two thousand and eighteen. Class night was phenomenal, the prom was phenomenal, and graduation was exceptional.
I did owe him.
Ms. Matucci?
I'd like to say the same thing about graduation. It was fantastic. It was a great experience. It was so nice to see so many students of, the parents that I was, grew up with, their kids graduating. It was, it was awesome. I was excited for the first time, first time in twenty-nine years to be at graduation. So it was, it was a lot of fun. The other thing is, there's a fundraiser, Walk for Josh, hosted by the Gomun for Banks and Cummings School PTO. That's on June sixteenth at ten o'clock, starting at the ATC. It's a great fundraiser. If you can make it, we'd appreciate it.
I want to echo what everyone else has said about the Senior Week graduation. Graduation was exceptional. It was amazing to see the number of scholarships that were given out and the leg up and the advantage it gave some of these students that wouldn't otherwise have it. I think it was amazing. The Vichellus Scholarship is just amazing. I, when they all stood up, all the people that took that scholarship that won it was amazing. I also want to say how sad it is to see Ryan Herity go, but I do want to wish him the best of luck and congratulate him on his new school choice.
I would like to echo what everyone else says, especially Mr. Fabiano. I hope everyone on this committee can make it to the Walk for Josh. Also, the graduation was wonderful. The speeches were great. Ms. Howard did a great job, and the student speeches were just tremendous. So congratulations to the class of two thousand and eighteen.
Okay, on the Walk for Josh, yes, do come out to that. And pre-registration is not required, but is hoped for so by Friday. I'd like to have pre-registration so they know, get a head count.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Seconded by Mr. Matucci, seconded by President Vecchia, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed?